Call this regular meeting of city council to order January 5th, 2021 here at the Stafford County Annex. Are there any additions to the agenda besides the one that I have? I have a five-minute executive session, non-elected personnel. Unless there's any other additions to the agenda, entertain a motion to approve. So move. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we have citizens' comments. Teresa?
I'd just like to give a update on our core community group. Three years ago, we started and it was called Circles at that time. About a year and a half ago, we switched and we are now called Stafford County Core Community. Circles was a nationwide program and we still follow the curriculum and... But they were charging us $1,800 a year for... to be able to use the name Circles. And we felt like since we have to raise our own money, that we didn't need to do that anymore. So we are now called Stafford County Core Community. When we went into shutdown mode in April and May, we continued to meet using Zoom meetings. And then this summer, we began to meet again in person. We meet out at the Methodist Church. They graciously let us meet out there every Monday evening. And we are taking precautions. We take temperatures. Everybody wears masks up to the time we eat our meal. And then the mask goes back on once we have class. A couple of months ago, we graduated our third class. There were eight participants, which are now called Core Leaders. And we plan to start our fourth class January 18th. And I have talked to eight people in the community that have shown interest. And so we're excited to get our fourth class started. Stafford and St. John, Core Community, we both have our own separate groups, but we do share a budget. Now Stafford has their own benevolence fund and St. John, we also have our own benevolence fund. And what that is, is somewhat of an emergency fund. Currently, everybody that is participating in CORE have jobs, but often that paycheck just doesn't stretch. I mean, they're living paycheck to paycheck. So when an emergency arises... For instance, had somebody that had COVID and then, you know, they had to be in quarantine for 10 days and, you know, could not work. Often appliances, major appliances will go out or they'll have some kind of a, you know, breakdown on a car. So this benevolence fund has really been able to assist and help our families. We are currently studying and discussing Mary McKeon's book called School of Finance. And we're finding it's a great resource. It's teaching how to better manage the money that they do have and teaching budgeting. CORE greatly appreciated your individual support last year. And I'm just here, if you feel led to continue supporting, we would greatly appreciate that. The CORE, you know, program is in St. John and in Stafford. Is positively changing individuals and families' lives. It's kind of a ripple effect. If we can calm the chaos and help mom and dad, that filters down to kids. So very thankful that we are able to offer this in Stafford County. And I've been truly blessed to be a part of it. Do any of you have any questions about it?
Approximately how many people do you have enrolled right now?
Uh, right now, we graduated eight and all of them. I have one that graduated that her job is in great band and she is around a lot of people. And so she doesn't want to put anybody at risk. And so even though she would like to continue coming, she doesn't just because she is around so many different people. So we have eight that graduated and then with this new class, we will hopefully have seven or eight that have said they are interested.
And are you asking about for the same type of donation to sponsor a meal from council and myself?
Yeah, yeah, a meal or the benevolence fund or just the general budget, whatever, whatever. You know, we just appreciate any, any support.
Okay.
I think we did $50 a piece last night.
We did $50 last night to sponsor a meal. I'm sure that if whatever you decide that you'd like to, whether sponsor a meal or maybe just donate to the benevolence fund, we could have Jamie collect that money. And then when everyone has donated, we can contact you.
That'd be great. I appreciate it.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, December 15th, 2020 and special meeting, December 30th, 2020. So move. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 1231, 2020 in the amount of $70,851.54. So move. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Moving on to department heads. Electrical Department, Jeff.
I really don't have anything. We're just doing maintenance stuff. I've been gone on vacation for a couple of weeks. So I've had some things for the guys to do and teaching them some things on that pole line that we've been building west of town. And I was just talking to Jason a little bit ago. We're going to go ahead and get our last two poles set. We have to, we have to vacuum in with the back truck instead of drilling them with a digger truck because they're so close to fiber optic cable. So that's something that's on the list that we're going to try and do. We're going to try and start some engines in the plant this week and warm them up and have a little another round of teaching guys on how to do that, you know, for those that can absorb and want to absorb. So just maintenance stuff that we're doing down there. So that's where we're at at this point.
All right, excellent. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Jeff? Moving on to Water Department. Jason?
Oh, we're just got some stuff coming up. The water report for KDHE is coming due. So we're going to be working on that. And we're moving some meter setters for homes and trying to take care of some stuff lights warmer and going from there. So and we on the wastewater, we've done some line cleaning. We've got a few problems. So we've been doing that. And I'll be sending in some testing for some tests to lab for KDHE so we can discharge.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Jason under the Water Department? Moving on, Street Department.
We've been just as usual. We're starting to work on some alleys while it's getting warmer. I got the guys dragging those. He's still getting Allen on the grader. Letting him play with that, trying to get used to it. And then they're going to start, next week, they're going to start filling cracks. It's going to get colder again. And then we'll just keep on doing some pottling and sweeping streets, stuff like that.
Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Jason under the Street Park Department?
Allen has the test test.
All right. And speaking of which, Police Chief?
Different Allen on that test.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, no, it wasn't me, huh?
Oh, okay.
I failed that thing miserably. No, I got it.
Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for Chief Adams? Okay, have we heard anything from Chief Sanders?
Usually comes with him.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Nobody has any questions, comments, concerns for either Chief Sanders or Chief Adams? Move on to City Administrator. Jamie?
I don't have anything. So we get to old business.
Okay. All right, we'll wait till we can get down there. All right, City Attorney, John?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns for John? Wow, this is a first. Okay, anything under Old Business that we would like to discuss this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, the house numbers, Allen and I talked again this morning. He, the police department's going to work on getting numbers for, or houses that don't have their numbers up yet. And we can work together to, to be able to get that kind of complete and, and off of the list.
Do we have approximate number of houses that are not numbered? Give or take?
No. I would say over 150.
Okay.
I mean, the last time that I tried, I had, I had well over 100 on my list.
Okay, I'm just curious on that. All right.
Um, I did get an email from Schwab Eaton about the sewer. So I will be trying to get back ahold of him later on this week. With the property code violations, I plan on getting ahold of the 112 South Monroe and seeing what's going on there. The next two, the 206 and 209 West First, we're just kind of waiting to... I have a list kind of going and as soon as we can get to cleaning them out, we will clean them out and then let our volunteer group know that, that they're ready. 401 East Fourth, we started cleaning that out yesterday. Pam and I had a little bit of downtime, so we actually locked the office for about an hour. And I forwarded the phone to my cell phone and we got the, the guys finally set the dumpster. So they set it and we filled it. So there's not much left. And I think there's a stove left in the house and then we just have what's left in the garage. So I have written down everyone that helped in the amount of time. So I'll get like an invoice kind of set up for that. So we can turn that in when it's all said and done to, to go on to the tax roll.
Did you get rid of that lovely refrigerator?
So the refrigerator actually was gone this last time. Yeah, the first time I went into that house, there was that refrigerator, but the... Yeah, it's been gone. Someone else got to deal with that.
What is it that is being removed?
Um, our volunteer group asked for all personal property to be removed from the property before they start.
Pretty much junk though, right?
Yes. Like it's all, yeah, like I could have made a horror film out of the, like... It was almost like kids' clothes left in this back shed thing. And it was just so rainy and it looked like it could have been in a horror film. So...
Right, yikes.
Yeah, it's nothing, nothing of value. It's all...
Can't believe you volunteer.
Damn it. Well, let me tell you a story about that house. It's been a long four years. The 647, I haven't got an update on that, so I'll try to reach out to Bytlers and talk to them. I honestly haven't even driven down that road, so I'll do some checking on that for next meeting. 651 and 808 North Exchange, I've talked to both of them. Fifth Street says that he was going to come in yesterday and give me the papers and if not, call him. So I'll call him again in the next couple of days. And then 808 North Exchange asked if I would meet him at the property and kind of show him what I was talking about with the property lot sizes. So I'll go and just kind of explain and let him know that donating is still an option, but council is going to be moving forward with their stuff. So...
And we are certain, can we, can that kind of lots, what are you going to occur?
The lots split occur? Can it?
Have you looked at the, I have not. You looked at the...
So he purchased it in two different, he purchased it all different. And then I think they just combine it when it's the same property owner. So I'm not positive on that. I mean, I, if, I wouldn't see why you couldn't. But when I explained it to him, when I went out and measured, splitting it up is not going to be very, very productive, I guess, in my opinion, because the house and the garage, the way that it sits, it really should be on the two lots and then it would really just leave one left for him to have. And that's really not enough to do anything with. So...
It might violate, he might not be able to do anything with it according to zoning regulations if he bought it too small.
Right. Yeah. So I'm going to try to explain that and just remind him that that is an option. I got a letter from 808 North Broadway basically just saying that they're working on it. It's going slower than I wanted, but we're making progress. It's going to take a little time, but if I can get Janice to work during the week, it will get done much faster. He can't throw her stuff away. He wants the house removed as bad as the city wants it. We'll keep working on it as much as I can considering I am home one day a week. Janice is over there today and she said the dumpster was still full. I talked to Grant last Tuesday morning, 8:00 AM, and he said he would get it. Why didn't you tell me I could use stone? Grant is so unreliable. When we get done with the small stuff, I will use stone roll off. And I proceeded to remind him that we have a contract with others and he cannot use stone. So that's where that's, that's at. And when I called Grant, Grant doesn't get contacted as much as Ron is saying. So I'm not sure, it said, he said, he said games.
Anything else?
Not on the properties. Um, the engine for the power plant, I have been...
Let's go back to properties.
Okay.
I think I would like to give the two, the 647 East Fifth and the 808 North Broadway 60 days to have it done.
Okay.
I mean, that's my feeling. We've given them three months now and I don't see a lot of progress. I mean, I'd just say 60 days from tonight. Our first meeting, March 2nd, if it's not done, we just get rid of them. Because otherwise, we're going to drag this out for another year and I'm not doing it. We've done this with other properties and it just continues to go... There's always something that's wrong. It's always somebody else's fault and I'm not going to, I'm not going to drag it out. I'd just soon give them 60 days and be done with it. I don't see anything wrong with that.
So everybody on council agree with that?
Yeah.
Can we get motion just so we can get it on the...
Okay, entertain a motion to approve that.
I've made the motion to give the 647 East Fifth and 808 North Broadway 60 days to clean properties up or the city will do it.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any more discussion?
I have a second.
Yeah. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. That is, that will be March 2nd. March 2nd, okay.
It'll have about 60 days, but it's close enough for next, our first meeting in March anyway.
Jamie, will you contact them and tell them both properties?
Yep, I'll send the minutes typed up tomorrow. I will send, I'll probably do a draft minutes for them to send out so they can get it right away. And I'll probably email Ron and call Jason just so they know.
Okay. All right, Jamie, we're going to talk about the engine for a power plant?
Yeah, so I've been, I don't know if you guys have been doing any checking outside of anything. I've, I've contacted a few people just to try to get more information and come to you guys with as much as I can. Today, I spoke with someone from Lakin and he kind of gave me a different perspective on things. They actually decommissioned their power plant and have been doing other things. I talked to an owner of a company that does multimillion dollar jobs. And he said if this is something that we need and something that we want to do, the scope of the work is, is good. But it's just merely if, if we think we need it and if it's cost effective. And, and I almost didn't want to bring this up because I didn't have the time to... I mean, when I was talking to the Lakin, they, they have their stuff together. I mean, he, you know, he told me, he knows exactly how many years a light bulb is going to be paid off if they put it at the city pool or, you know, just different things. And I'm like, I want you to teach me your ways. But he just kind of gave me a different perspective. But when I did send our information of our three current engines at the power plant and the CAT engine that's proposed with the scope of work from the company, you know, he did say that, that what they're proposing is a great deal. But it's, it's just if we want to do it, if we need it. So I mean, it didn't really feel like, it didn't feel like I got much from it other than that he said it was a good idea. But I really wish I could put together more numbers of, of different things. But I, I just don't even know where to start with, with it. And I mean, Greg obviously thought it was a good idea with, with the numbers when he came and the cost saving. But I mean, it's a, it's a matter of do we want to keep the power plant for if the power fails or do we want to be done with it? And it costs quite a bit of money to decommission. I didn't know that. You're looking at quite a bit of money. And I was going to call a company. Jeff, I know you've talked about them before, the company out of Nebraska. I swear you've said their name before. Faribault.
Yeah.
I was just going to call because I know they're huge though. So I was going to call just to try to get a number, just so you guys would have the information, not that... But yeah, I didn't realize it's a big process to even decommission. But I'm, I'm continuing. If you guys have any specified information that you want, please let me know because I do have a few more contacts that I'll reach out to. But I'm just trying to gather as much information I can so you guys can make an informed decision.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that? If you have any questions, comments or concerns, they want to pass on to Jamie? Okay, unless there's anything else you want to speak about on Old Business, then move on to New Business.
Uh, we're not done.
Oh, you're not done. Nothing we've done.
Year end transfers. So I had given you guys information, the meeting that I was locked up in jail. Not really. The budgeted transfers. Today, I kind of played around with this spreadsheet here just so you guys had a few more numbers and not, not just seeing like, hey, yeah, we have enough in this account to make these transfers. The, I don't know if everyone was in here, but the, it says suggested. It's supposed to say suggested transfer there. That, that is everything as it should be, except for the fact that we budgeted sewer to general $10,000. And it kind of breaks it down, down at the bottom. If everyone can see down here, it's kind of highlighted. I put the $10,000 into sewer replacement instead of general because of the way that everything's sitting. It, it will be better off in there just in case something happens. And then our water and light, water and light surplus is going to be over $98,119.11. And that is the money that we've saved with our new energy agreement. So that is going to be your transfer. We talked about the money, we're saving that monthly, that money monthly, but we're just going to make a year-end transfer so we don't have to have so many transfers throughout the year. And I do have, I have the spreadsheet associated with that transfer if you guys want a copy of that. I know I've sent it over recently, but I don't know for sure what months it included. So if you do want that, I can get that. So, so basically, I need, I need approval for all of it, but specifically for those two because those aren't part of what was budgeted. And then I know Allen has been requesting extra. So the sheet that you guys have is the $15,000 that we have budgeted. I printed myself off just because I didn't want to waste a bunch of paper. I but, I budgeted with an extra 30,000 or the extra... Today, we talked about doing an extra 15, so it would be 30,000. And, you know, the, the money, I mean, the money's there. You're just going to see your numbers to the right on the right-hand column shift. So put in the number, put in the number that you want to transfer extra and that's, I mean, the numbers are going to shift by that much. So I mean, it's completely up to you. I sent you guys the email. Kind of showing you more of the equipment reserve fund and what we've spent out due to the vehicles. The one vehicle, the charger was out of equipment reserve, but the other one was not, right?
The dray.
The dray.
Torres wasn't?
Torres was not, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't print that off. So I don't know if you guys have any questions? I know I didn't send it, I was working on it until about 5:05, so... I just didn't know, because I know I've sent over before, but you guys weren't comfortable making the decision. So I figured this would show you better numbers and show you that it's, that it's good. And I was, I was telling Marshall, we aren't doing the, usually we do a transfer from water and light to general fund. And I chose to leave that out. It wasn't budgeted. We usually leave that out of the budget just because of the budget numbers. But I mean, there's enough room where we could transfer the $120,000. I opted to not do that because of the projects that we're looking at doing with the power plant. That'll give us a little extra availability there. But it's also if we transfer to the general fund, it doesn't go back. So that's there and, and that will help the beginning cash balance for the, the water and light fund at the beginning of, of the year. So, of the beginning of this year.
This $98,119.11, that's our savings?
That is the savings off of our Midwestern Energy contract that we would...
Which is for 11 months. So it would be $107,000 approximately.
Yeah, it varies. Let me find that paper.
But it would be, I guess it'd probably be a little less than that being in the wintertime with our usage.
It just kind of depends.
That's 105.
Yeah.
Thousand applies at 11 months.
Because we bill a month on the rear, so that December hasn't been accounted for yet.
Which we kind of estimated being in the 100 grand. You're awful close anyway.
It's December.
Oh, it is 12 months?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's December of 19 to November of 20. Yep, so that, it's a full, we'll have a full 12 months. It's just going to be a little wacky since we are, since we do bill a month behind. And I do have, like, I have, I have mock numbers, I guess, if you want them for... To transfer like the 30,000 instead of the 15, your numbers are going to change... The second to the, or your, your excess deficit column is going to change from 232, 851, 58 to 217, 851, 58. And then if we transfer the extra 25 that we talked about in the beginning, so we would transfer a total of 40,000, your excess deficit column is going to be down to the 207, 851.
Do we think that, do we think that's necessary or are we just going to handle it?
I don't know. I would, I would just maybe just leave it if, I mean, if you don't plan on any, anything coming out of there this next year. You know, it should be... You know, it should be built back up for next year, I guess I would think.
If we have to do an emergency thing, we do it just like we did towards pickup, and we just adjust accordingly.
It, it can still be done the same way as well, like.
I mean, the, the money is still going to be in the general fund one way or the other.
Correct.
Yeah. If it's, if it's necessary.
Not for it. It would transfer to fund sixty-one.
I guess what he means, if it comes out of there, he, I guess he means if it comes out of there either way.
It's still.
Yeah.
It's still there, one way or the other.
I think, I think that's another thing to think about, like, and I would have to double check it, but I, can you transfer from sixty-one back to general if it was absolutely needed? Not that it would be, but. I mean, that'd be another thing. I didn't even think about that till right now.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you transferred out, you just spent it out of your equipment reserve, because that's what it would go to.
Right.
Right.
But I didn't, I didn't make sure.
If you wanted to take it the other way.
Yeah.
There's always lease, lease screens too. I mean, if you get an emergency.
Yeah, I, I, that's right.
Yeah, totally bound. Nothing I want to go that round.
All these transfers are right on, I mean, that's just right on track from last year.
Except for the sewer replacement, the water and light surplus.
Right, so everything, really, the num- the only, the only addition is really going to be your water and light, because all I did with the sewer is take that ten thousand from the general to the, to the sewer replacement. But it's, it's different than the budget says, so.
Okay, council, is there any more discussion?
The ninety-eight thousand, that, that works with those bond numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's.
And then some.
Yeah, I mean, that's totally relevant, I guess. That's the reason I was bringing that up.
What's that going to be a year, the bond?
I guess it depends on the.
Depends on the year.
What, what year I can have.
Oh, yeah. There's that.
I mean, if you want to do a ten-year, fifteen, or.
You got that stuff from the.
I mean, ten-year is eighty thousand or something.
Eighty-four, wasn't it?
Eighty-four, I don't.
Yeah, eighty-four.
And that, and that was estimated prices. I mean, I, I think if, if that's the case, I mean.
But I'm glad to have some good one, because, I mean, good or bad, in different ten years from now, that might not.
That you pick up, you pick up two and a half payments over that ten years for the money you save in not buying that half a megawatt a pound.
Right.
You save twenty-one thousand a year by doing that. So, that's a payment every four years.
Right. And that'll take effect after, basically, a year.
That we, they have up to a year to hold it.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Which they will do, but that, but they have, in that contract, they have that right to hold it up to twelve months.
Right, I mean, if we tell them, they have the right from the time we tell them to hold it for.
Exactly, yeah. But at the end, it still picks up two and a half payments out of there that you wouldn't have, you know, so.
I mean, I think that's something else that would be.
Yeah.
I mean, you're. Kind of like Kirsten, you got all this money built up, and Kirsten, you're still in one percent, you know, you've got big decisions.
Right, right.
I mean, I just asked Jamie, basically, what makes sense to me. Is if we're in a contract for the savings for ten years, because we don't know what's going to happen after the ten years, I'd like to look at probably that ten-year option.
Well, I'd rather do a ten-year, because I know between the weeks, we've got a locked-in contract.
Correct.
But, I mean, if we do the update, you also have negotiation powers when it comes time to renegotiate a contract.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a lot more.
And, and I even seen that on that video from.
I'll get it to you to look at this.
Then that was part of their deal.
Well, it's the only, it's the only negotiation you have, because of, at any time, you can't fire that when they need it. You've, your contract's null and void.
Right.
You're getting no more wholesale pill while you're done.
Yeah.
And I believe that was some of the problem that the city of Lakin, um, was experiencing. Their power plant wasn't able to keep up with their, um, max capacity, and part of their agreement was that they had to, um, run their power plant for, I think, five days at a hundred degrees, and they just couldn't do it. And, and it was, I mean, it was interesting, but.
So they basically turned their power back over to the company and decommissioned.
They maintained the lines and everything, but, yep, they've turned it, they, they spent over a hundred thousand dollars and decommissioned their power plant.
Tell me again, you said we usually transfer from water and light to general, but we're going to not. I'm just, I'm just wondering, if we can fund this from our savings, why are we saving from water and light to general? Why, why are we not doing that?
Why are we not making that transfer?
Transfers, yes.
Um, I'm just going to pat myself on the back and say, because Pam and I have been buckling down and, and we've been getting the general fund back up to where it needed to be, and things are running very well. And, um, in my opinion, I wanted to leave that there, because I feel like that maybe we might have a little bit of extra money that we could put towards the project um, because of how well we've got the budget back to it.
So you're leaving it there, just like you said, when it's, if we do it, we have, we can put more down on it.
Yeah, if we move forward with the seven, I mean, if we don't have to get a bond for seven hundred and sixty thousand, we have an extra hundred thousand we can put towards that without, I mean, because, I mean, last year, when you, you remember when we did our budget, I mean, they said, like, we're doing good, you know, we need to be looking at these projects. And so, when I was talking to Danielle today, I called her to go over all my numbers. You know, she said that, you know, do you have any projects? And I told her, we're working on the engine. And I said, I'd rather, I guess, see it sit in water and light, just in case we do move forward with something at the power plant. But, you know, until we don't know, like, I just want it there just in case. But, you know, if we had a big street project, I would say, we're going to transfer it to general, so it can be in there for a big street project.
What a better water tower. We could, we could use that out of water and light, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it would be used also for that if we want to.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mr. Jacobin.
Okay, council, happy with what they've heard about the year-end transfers?
Yeah, I, I think all these numbers on the bottom look fine to me.
Everybody else?
Yeah.
Everyone okay? Do we need a, um, motion for that?
Um, if you, if you could make a specific motion to say, um, that you approve the budgeted year-end transfers along with sewer to sewer replacement at thirty-five thousand instead of twenty-five thousand, and then water and light to water and light surplus to the one forty-eight, one eleven nineteen, instead of the fifty thousand.
I'll make that a form of motion.
I think you actually have to say it, though.
Here.
I think it might be easier just to do it three separate motions.
Yeah.
Smaller.
Yeah, probably. Just make a motion to, um, approve all budgeted year-end transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve all budgeted, budgeted year-end transfers.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Okay, so now make a motion to approve the transfer from sewer to sewer replacement in the amount of thirty-five thousand.
Make a motion to approve the transfer from sewer to sewer replacement in the amount of thirty-five thousand.
Instead of twenty-five thousand.
Instead of twenty-five thousand.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Okay, say she.
Transfer, make a motion to transfer from water and light to water and light.
Make a motion to, um, transfer from water and light to water and light surplus in the amount of hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and eleven cents.
Instead of.
Instead of fifty thousand.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Hey, you got anything else? Unless that, uh, old business.
One, second to any invoice.
That's what I thought.
Um, I, I think I read it in my administrator report. Um, basically, when I talked to Phil, he apologized for not, um, contacting me or, or you guys to, to let him know. Um, from my understanding, there has been an agreement um, from eons ago. It's been done before twenty, twenty-some years, like, I don't remember when they said. Um, and as far as I can tell, the, the township has never claimed any responsibility. Basically, the city's in charge of it, because that's where our, our wastewater runs, runs through the ditch. So they, they said it's ours, and they did the work, and he apologized that he didn't come to us before he did it. He just knew it needed done and, and went for it, so. And I do need to call him, because the, I was driving the other day, and I noticed, is there cement in that ditch?
Up to the bridge on the bridge.
Okay.
In the bottom.
Okay. Did they take the cement out from when they did the road, then?
I don't know. Does it go further to Marytown?
Goes to the bridge, goes to the bridge and went to Ferns.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where it goes.
Yeah, that's the Frank's Corner.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it don't go further north.
Right, it's crazy, it's crazy, it's a drain. It was put in there years and years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Phil, like, is, is that something we need to probably figure out for when they dig that ditch?
Well, they all know it's in there. The bottom needs to be cleaned out. About the only thing we can get in there is a skid steer. So.
What's the invoice for?
So, um, the invoice is for the work, like, they dug out from that bridge that he was talking about, all the way out to the sewer ponds.
Oh, really?
And so that is going to help the flow of our sewer water out there, so. I believe it was.
Now they're billing us for doing that.
Correct.
Now they're billing us for doing that.
Yeah, I have the. Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Uh, yes.
I'd make a motion to pay the staff of county, through a department, fifty-six hundred dollars for cleaning out the ditch.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Anything else, Jamie?
No.
Okay.
I, I got one. Build sewer machine, you think you can check into that?
Uh, yeah, I can call back. Have you talked to P and S at all?
I should have talked to Mark. He was down here the other day to help me on that compressor, and I forgot to ask him.
Yeah, when I called before, he said, so basically, like, when they get machines like that, it's kind of, um, when they can get to it. So, when I had called, I don't remember, was it a couple meetings ago, I put on the report that, that they were working on it, but I, I'll call tomorrow and, and get another update.
John, he does that. He also delivers motors to pumping units and stuff like that, so he's, you know, that's not his only job, and so when he gets a little time, he kind of pulls stuff in and works on it, so. Yeah, I, I, I just. I was with him for a couple hours. I never even thought about it.
I'm getting close to cleaning main sewer lines too.
Well, you know, with the truck, it works a lot better with the truck, but still, it would be nice to have it back, you know, so.
Okay, unless there's anything else in your old business you'd like to discuss? Move on to new business, resolution twenty-twenty-one, oh one, resolution to exempt financial statements from GAAP requirements.
This is just the yearly, uh, resolution, um, done every year since I've been here. John actually asked why it wasn't a charter ordinance.
Apparently, no other city does charter ordinance either, so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash oh one.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay. We have a five-minute executive session for non-elected personnel to include everyone around the table. Is that correct, Jamie?
Yeah. Jason, do you want to begin?
Okay. An entertaining motion for that?
Some of.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We will resume at seven fifty-one. Call this meeting back to order unless there's any other business we need, oh, yes, chief.
Can I get this one final executive session with this table and, and Jamie in, just real quick? Just something to come up today, and I forgot about it. Can I get that on there?
Well, we're going to have to give you ten merits for this, but yes.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to amend the agenda to add a five-minute executive session for
Yeah, non-elected personnel.
Non-elected personnel.
Okay. Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll resume at, uh, seven fifty-seven. Call this meeting back to order, and unless we have any more business.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion on the table. Is there here a second?
Second.
That took a long time. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.